Please rise, ladies and gentlemen. The 16th Sangguniang Palaluwigan is now convened for its 25th regular session. Honorable Board Member Aurelio J. Leva III Presiding.
The 25th Regular Session of the 16th Sangguniang Palaluwigan is now called to order. We will be led in prayer by the Honorable Mercedes Arriano, followed by the Philippine National Anthem.
Manatili po tayo, dahimik sa presensya ng ating Panginoon. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Father God, thank you for allowing us today to gather and be able to share our knowledge and time with one another in this season. We pray that you would deepen our comprehension, broaden our thinking, and guide us in understanding of what we are able to discuss today. Bless our colleagues and indulge us in the cope with the challenges imposed upon us by our position and the public service. May you bestow your blessings so that we may be able to perform our roles and responsibilities in the spirit of our love and generosity. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Glory be to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Mr. Secretary, please call the role of the members of the Sangguniang Palaluwigan present in today's session.
Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes, Honorable Antonio El Mangukang III, Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado, Honorable Melga Balaran Cabo, Honorable Mercedes Arriano, Honorable Danilo Arred, Honorable Ismael Dipilim, Honorable Jose Neral El Mangol, Honorable Valdomero Alimpiada, Honorable Loren Arrosales. Mr. Presiding Officer, with the nine members of the board present, we have the necessary corum for this morning's session.
The Chair declares the presence of a corum. The Chair declares 30 minutes recess.
Okay, the session resume. First, good morning and thank you, Honorable Leva, for acting as the temporary Presiding Officer and for opening the session just on time. And let's proceed.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous session dated January 13, 2023, and consider the same as having been read without prejudice to the corrections, amendments of the members of the board. I so move.
There is a motion from the Chair of the Committee on Rules for the reading of the minutes of the January 13, 2023 session to be dispensed with without prejudice to the submission of correction on the floor. Any second to that motion? Julie seconded, any objection? The Chair hears none. Pedy bang sa susunod since it is coming from the Chair of the Committee on Rules. Let's rule that there will be no need for a second, but we can proceed. So, any correction from the floor?
Madam Presiding Officer, since no member of the board manifested any corrections or amendments, I move that we approve and adopt the minutes of the 24th Regular Session dated January 13, 2023. I so move.
There is a motion from Honorable Leva for the adoption of the minutes of the January 13, 2023 session. Julie seconded by Honorable Mangukang. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the motion is approved. The resolution adopting January 13, 2023 minutes without correction is approved.
For the matters arising from the minutes, I invite the members of the board who have some matters arising from the previously adopted minutes of the session.
Any concern, any matters arising from the minutes from the honorable members of this August body?
Since no member of the board has matters arising from the minutes, we now go to the approval and amendment of the agenda.
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, for the privilege speech without any in today's session, as well as the question hour, from the messages and correspondence from the Governor, we have three items for the communications and conditions. We have five items for the municipal ordinances. For review of the board, we have three items for the first reading and referral to committees. We don't have any proposed ordinance. We have two proposed resolutions. We have two committee reports. We have no unfinished business. We have three proposed ordinance for the business for the day, and we don't have any unassigned business. Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the adoption and approval of the agenda for today's session without any amendment.
There is a motion from the Chair of the Committee on Rules for the approval of today's agenda without amendment. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The agenda as presented is approved without amendment. Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Presiding Officer, no member of the board avail of the privilege hour, and we don't have any invited just for the question hour. We now go to the calendar of business. We don't have any unfinished business. For the business for the day, the first item in the business for the day is the letter from Ms. Miriam Esadiwa. May this representation be recognized, Madam Chair.
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Chair, may I move that we approve and adopt an ordinance declaring municipal ordinance number 246 Series of 2022 of the Municipality of Santa Cruz as valid, operational, and within the power of the Sangguniang Bayan of Santa Cruz to enact. I so move.
Okay, there is a motion by Honorable Leva for the adoption of a resolution declaring as valid and within the authority of the Municipality of Santa Cruz to enact Municipal Ordinance Number 246 Series of 2022. Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Dindin Opis Mercado. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 246 Series of 2022 as operative valid and within the authority of the Municipality of Santa Cruz to enact is now approved.
Madam Chair, may this representation be recognized again.
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Granting One-Step Salary Grade Higher on the Basic Salary of Mr. Danilo R. Garcia, Administrative 3 at the Municipal Hospital, Effective 3 Months Prior to His Compulsory Retirement on March 28, 2023." I so move.
For the adoption of a resolution granting one-step salary grade higher on the basic salary of Mr. Danilo R. Garcia, Administrative 3 at the Torrijos Municipal Hospital, Effective 3 Months Prior to the Compulsory Retirement on March 28, 2023. Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Arriano, Honorable Opis Mercado. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The resolution is adopted.
We now go to the next item, and this representation would like to be recognized again, Madam Chair.
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Madam Chair, may I move for the adoption of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2022-04 entitled, "An Ordinance Declaring the Situations of Elaya and Bolo in Barangay Balakbakin as No-Bill Zone as Valid, Operational, and Within the Power of the Sangguniang Bayan of Torrijos to Enact." I so move.
There is a motion by Honorable Leva for the adoption of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2022-04 of the Municipality of Torrijos, entitled, "An Ordinance Declaring the Situations of Elaya and Bolo in Barangay Bayakbakin as No-Bill Zone." Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Arriano, Honorable Alimpiada. Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The resolution is adopted.
Madam Chair, the next item in the business for the day is the accompanying resolutions of the Committee Report Number 74-2023 of the Committee on Appropriation. May the chairperson of the Committee on Appropriation be recognized?
Honorable Caballes is recognized.
Madam Presiding Officer, this representation hereby files an omnibus motion for the adoption of the following resolutions. Number 1, a resolution declaring appropriation ordinance number 4 Series 2022, authorizing the CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 4 of the Municipality of Binavista, Marinduke, operative in its entirety subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the Provincial Budget Officer. Number 2, a resolution declaring appropriation ordinance number 03, Series 2022, authorizing the CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 2 of the Municipality of Bak, Marinduke, operative in its entirety subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the Provincial Budget Officer. Number 3, a resolution declaring appropriation ordinance number 4 Series 2022, authorizing the CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 3 of the Municipality of Bak, Marinduke, operative in its entirety subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the Provincial Budget Officer. Number 4, a resolution declaring appropriation ordinance number 05 Series 2022, authorizing the CY 2022 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number 3 of the Municipality of Binavista, Marinduke, operative in its entirety subject to the conditions, comments, and findings of the Provincial Budget Officer. Number 5, a resolution appropriating 300,000 to be incurred in the finalization of the Marinduke Environmental Code under the Office of the Vice Governor. Number 6, a resolution appropriating the amount of 300,000 for the research draft information reduction of the proposed Human Resource Management Code under the Office of the Vice Governor. Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, there is an omnibus motion covering six proposed resolutions, which are all as offshoot of the adopted committee report of the Committee on Appropriation a while ago. Is there any second to the omnibus motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Leva, Honorable Opis Mercado, Honorable Arriano. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the omnibus motion is approved. The sixth resolution as mentioned and read by Honorable Caballes is now approved.
We now go to proposed resolution number 16-03. May I ask the secretary to please read the title of that said proposed ordinance?
Proposed Ordinance Number 16-03 entitled, "An Ordinance Providing Mechanism in the Acquisition and Use of Iron Fortified Rice in All Government Units and Offices in the Province of Marinduke, Providing Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes," authored by Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado, chairperson of the Committee on Health and Nutrition, co-authored by Honorable Mercedes Arriano, Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes, Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, and Honorable Antonio El Mangukang III.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask to recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Health and Nutrition for the sponsorship of the said measure?
Honorable Opis Mercado is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. "The Period of Interpolation and Debate is Now Open for an Ordinance Providing Mechanisms in the Acquisition and Use of Iron Fortified Rice in All Government Units and Offices in the Province of Marinduke, Providing Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes."
Deliberation is now opened as manifested by the proponent with regard to proposed ordinance number 16-03. Any deliberation from the floor? I think everybody is convinced with the importance of the ordinance. So, what is the pleasure of the Chair of the Committee on Health and Nutrition?
Hearing none, I now move to close the period of interpolation and debate. And now...
As moved, the period of interpolation and debate is now closed. And proceed, Honorable Dindin Opis Mercado.
The period for amendment is now open.
As moved by the Chair of the Committee on Health, the period of amendment is now opened. Any amendment from the floor? The Chair hears none. So, what's the pleasure of the Chair?
Okay, I move to close the period of amendment.
The period of amendment is hereby closed.
Now, I move for the approval on second reading for an ordinance providing mechanisms in the acquisition and use of iron fortified rice in all government units and offices in the province of Marinduke, providing necessary funds therefore and for other related purposes.
So, as moved by the Chair of one of the sponsoring committees, Honorable Opis Mercado, for the approval of ordinance number 16-03 on second reading. Is there any objection? Julie seconded by one of the sponsoring committee chair. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, proposed ordinance number 16-03 is now approved on second reading.
Madam Chair, the second proposed ordinance is proposed ordinance number 16-09. May I ask the secretary to please read the title?
For proposed ordinance number 16-09 entitled, "An Ordinance Granting Milestone Incentive to All Bonafide Senior Citizens in the Province of Marinduke, Providing for the Mechanisms and Implementation thereof, Providing Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes," authored by Honorable Antonio El Mangukang III and Honorable Mercedes Arriano, co-authored by Honorable Ismael Dipilim.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we recognize the sponsor of the said measure, the Honorable Antonio El Mangukang III?
Honorable Mangukang is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Atin po ang pormal na iminum kay Madam Presiding Officer na atin po ang buksan ang proposed ordinance para po sa period of interpolation.
Okay, the deliberation is now opened as moved by one of the sponsoring committee chair. The floor is now open for deliberation. Any interpolation from the floor? The Chair hears none. What is now the pleasure of the sponsoring committee chair?
I move to close the interpolation.
The period of interpolation is now closed, and we will now open the period of amendment. Any amendment from the floor? The Chair hears none. What is the pleasure of Honorable Mangukang?
I move to close the period of deliberation, Madam Chair.
The period of amendment is now closed as moved.
I move that this proposed ordinance number 16-09 be approved on the second reading.
There is a motion by one of the sponsoring committee chair, Honorable Mangukang, for the approval of proposed ordinance number 16-09 as previously read. Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Alimpiada, Honorable Arriano, Honorable Lim, Honorable Red, Honorable Dindin Opis Mercado. Any objection? The Chair hears none. Thus, the motion is approved. The proposed ordinance number 16-09 is now approved on second reading.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that the secretary to please read item proposed ordinance number 16-19?
For proposed ordinance number 16-19, "An Ordinance Providing for the Mechanism in the Acquisition of Land Necessary for the Marinduke Airport Development Project Located at Barangay Smasiga in Liptangin in the Municipality of Gason, this Province, and for Other Related Purposes," authored by Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, chairperson of the Committee on Rules, Laws, and Ordinances.
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
May this representation be recognized to sponsor the said measure?
Proceed, Honorable Leva.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. May I move for the opening of the period of debate and interpolation?
The period of interpolation is now open. Any deliberation from the floor?
May I just give some explanation? Ni revise po natin totally ang ordinance so that it will be attuned to the provisions of Resolution Number 280 Series of 2022, which grants authority to the provincial governor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the DOTR and the provincial government of Marinduke, where nakalagay po doon that the DOTR with the recommendation of the PGU Marinduke shall initiate expropriation proceedings if necessary. So, yun po ang ano, kaya dito po sa ating section 3, nilagay lamang natin dito in case of failure or refusal to the offer of the provincial government, the provincial governor shall cause the initiation. Meaning to say, he could recommend or in his own mulishon, pwede rin po niyang maging deputized po siya ng DOTR as to the expropriation. So, yun po 'yung ginawa natin, at siniti rin po natin 'yung provisions sa title. Yung title po ay di na natin nilagay 'yung expropriations. So, isa pa po sa nailagay, nakaano sa atin is may inappropriate po pala tayong 15%.
Yung magiging share supposedly?
15% of the inappropriable chargeable against a 20% development plan, which kaya naman natin po inappropriate nun ay wala pa pong panggaling sa DOTR. If I may, Madam Chair, as an offshoot of the committee report, dun po sa repealing clause, nakalagay dito all rules, regulations, orders, and/or circulars, including Resolution Number 233 Series of 2022, which are contrary to or inconsistent with the provisions are hereby repealed or modified accordingly. Idagdag po natin para magamit namang po 'yung 20% for other purposes, for other development purposes. Ilagay na po natin in particular 'yung repealing nung Resolution Number 233 Series of 2022.
Um, is it possible for that particular phrase? I understand its importance, but is it possible that it be placed in a different portion of the sentence?
Or a separate section?
Kasi the said resolution may not be contrary, but it is no longer necessary.
Necessary. Yes, Madam Chair.
May be contrary to or inconsistent with or not necessary.
But sa situation and signal which are contrary to and causes are hereby repealed, including...
Yeah, accordingly. Including Resolution Number Blank for being unnecessary.
Yeah, for being unnecessary. I yield to the suggestion of the chairperson.
So, any other interpolation? Any other comment or discussion from the floor? So, this will be the final version of the ordinance that will substitute the previous proposed ordinance with regard to the subject matter. So, any other comment?
I move that we close the period of interpolation and debate, Madam Chair.
The period of interpolation is now closed.
And I move for the opening of the period of amendment?
The period of amendment is hereby opened.
With the notation that the earlier manifested amendment be included under section 5.
Okay, the proposed amendment is... Thank you to the proponent for considering the proposed amendment. Any other proposed amendment from the body? The Chair hears none?
I move for the closure of the period of amendment, Madam Chair.
The period of amendment is hereby closed.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve on second reading an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Mechanism in the Acquisition of Land Necessary for the Marinduke Airport Development Project Located at Barangay Smasiga and Liptangin in the Municipality of Gason, this Province, and for Other Related Purposes be approved as amended." I so move.
There is a motion from Honorable Leva for the approval on second reading, proposed ordinance number 16-19 as read. Any second to the motion? Julie seconded by Honorable Red. Any objection? The Chair hears none. So, the motion is approved. Proposed ordinance number 16-19 is now approved on second reading.
That closes the business for the day portion of our session. We don't have any unassigned business. Madam Presiding Officer, for the proposed ordinance and resolution for third and final reading, inasmuch as proposed ordinance number 16-03 was approved on second reading without any amendment, I move that it be considered for third and final reading.
The proposed ordinance number... Is there any objection that we approve for third, that we consider for possible consideration for third and final reading? Proposed ordinance number 16-03? No discussion a while ago, no amendment. I believe it is just practical. So, any... What's the pleasure of Honorable Leva?
If it is already approved, Madam Chair, I move that the secretary be directed to read the entirety of the proposed ordinance.
Proceed.
Proceed, our good secretary.
Proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero three, "An Ordinance Providing Mechanisms in the Acquisition and Use of Iron Fortified Rice in all government units and offices in the Province of Marinduke, Providing Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes", Authored by Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado, Chairman of the Committee on Health and Nutrition, Co-authored by Honorable Mercedes Arihano, Honorable Mark Julius Picabalias, Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III and Honorable Antonio L. Mangkukang. Being enacted by the Sixteen Sangguyang Pandalawigan of Marinduke in session assembled, Section One, titled, "This ordinance shall be known as the Rice-Iron Fortification Ordinance of the Province of Marinduke", Section Two, Declaration of Policy, "It is hereby declared the policy of the Province of Marinduke to promote sustainable health and nutrition among its constituents. For this purpose, the provincial government shall provide mechanism for the production, promotion and the use of iron fortified rice in the province." Section Three, Legal Basis, "This ordinance was enacted based on the following laws and issuances: Number one, Republic Act Number eighty-nine seventy-six, otherwise known as the Philippine Food Fortification Act of two thousand and its implementing rules and regulation; Republic Act Number eleven zero three seven, or the Masustansyang Pagkain Para Sa Batang Pilipino Act; Republic Act Number seventy-one sixty, or the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, particularly Section sixteen thereof; Number four, National Nutrition Council Governing Board Resolution Number one, Series twenty nineteen, on the scaling up rice fortification with iron for social safety nets, net programs in the Philippines; Number five, DILG Memorandum Circular Number twenty oh six dash one seventy, or on the implementation of RA eighty-nine seventy-six; and the Number six, DILG Memorandum Circular Number twenty twenty-two dash zero eighty-nine, on the scaling up of scaling up rice fortification for the local social safety net programs. Section Four, Definition of Terms, "As used in the ordinance, the following terms or phrases shall be defined as: Number one, "Fortificant", refers to a substance in chemical or natural form added to food to increase its nutrient value. Number two, "Fortification", the addition of nutrients to processed foods or food products at levels above the natural state. As an approach to control micronutrient deficiency, food fortification is the addition of micronutrient, a food that is widely consumed by the specific at-risk groups. Number three, "Iron Deficiency Anemia", is a common type of anemia, a condition in which blood lacks adequate healthy red blood cells. Red blood cells carry oxygen to the body's tissues. As the name implies, iron deficiency anemia is due to insufficient iron. Number four, "Iron Fortified Rice", is a mil' rice with added iron blended by addition of iron rice premix to mil' rice. Number five, "Iron Rice Premix", also referred to as "Iron Rice Kernel", is the fortificant used in for iron fortification of mil' rice, usually produced from rice either coated or extruded with the highly concentrated iron. The addition of iron rice premix to mil' rice is dependent on the iron content in the iron rice premix. Number six, "Micronutrient Malnutrition", refers to a form of malnutrition caused by inadequacies in the intake of vitamins and minerals, particularly vitamin A, iron, iodine and other micronutrients needed by the body to support its daily activities. Number seven, "Staple Foods", basic foods normally consumed by the general population on a daily basis such as rice, flour, sugar and oil among others. Section Five, "Mandatory Use of Fortified Rice in Government Supplemental Feeding Programs", it shall be mandatory for local government units, including the barangays, government-operated educational institutions and other government instrumentalities operating in the province to use iron fortified rice in all its supplemental feeding programs such as but not limited to the following: Number one, "Malnourished Children", Number two, "Daycare Centers", Number three, "Pregnant and Lactating Mothers", and Number four, "Senior Citizens". Section Six, "Purchase of Iron Fortified Rice", the provincial government and other local government units, including the barangay government-operated educational institution and other government instrumentalities operating the province, shall acquire iron fortified rice to authorize or accredited suppliers in the country, preferably within the region. Section Seven, "Implementation and Monitoring by Local Nutrition Offices", the provincial nutrition office in coordination with the municipal nutrition offices and the barangay nutrition scholars shall monitor the implementation of this ordinance. They shall cause a wide information dissemination and education campaign to encourage everyone, including those in the private sector, to support the iron fortification program in the entire province. Section Eight, "Role of the Provincial Nutrition Council", the provincial nutrition council shall be the primary policymaking body in the implementation of the rice fortification program in the province, provided that such policies they will come up shall be in accordance with the provision of this ordinance. If amendments to the ordinance were found necessary, the PNC shall request the Sangguyang Pandalawigan in formal writing. Appropriation, there shall be an annual appropriation for the implementation of this ordinance, the amount of which shall be determined by the provincial nutrition council and the provincial nutrition office. Implementing Rules and Regulation, the provincial nutrition office and the provincial nutrition council shall formulate implementing rules and regulations for the efficient and effective implementation of this ordinance, provided that the said IRR shall be done within ninety days from the effectiveness of this ordinance. Section Eleven, "If for any reason, any section or provision of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid, other sections or provisions not affected thereby shall continue to be in full force and effect." Section Twelve, "Repealing Clause", "All existing ordinances, resolution, local executive orders, rules and regulations that are inconsistent with the provision of this ordinance are hereby repealed or amended accordingly." Section Thirteen, "Effectivity", this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its approval.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I move that we vote that approval on third and final reading of this proposed ordinance through a roll call vote? Roll call vote has been recommended. So, we will do a roll call vote requesting the assistance of the secretary for proper recording.
Honorable Mark Julius Picabalias? Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III? Honorable Antonio L. Mangkukang III? Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado? Honorable Melgabala Ren Cabo? Honorable Mercedes Arihano? Honorable Danilo Arred? Honorable Ismail Dipilim? Honorable Jose Neril El Mangol? Honorable Valdo Mero Olympiada? Honorable Loren Rosales?
Yes.
What is the result?
Madam Presiding Officer, with eleven members of the board voted in favor of the proposed ordinance, no objection and no abstention.
With the complete members of the board, a total of eleven votes, voting favorably for proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero three, proposed, the Chair declares, proposed ordinance sixteen dash zero three, an ordinance introduced by Honorable Dindin Bernardin Opis Mercado, co-authored by Honorable Mercy Rehano, Honorable Mark Julius Picabalias, Honorable Aurelio Leva III and Honorable Antonio Mangkukang III, entitled, "Ordinance Providing Mechanisms in the Acquisition and Use of Iron Fortified Rice in all government units and offices in the Province of Marinduke, Providing Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes", is now approved on third and final reading. Madam Presiding Officer, inasmuch as proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero nine was approved on second reading without any amendment and according to our rules, the same can be approved on third and final reading. So, I move that it be considered for third and final reading in today's session. The Chair approves the consideration of the proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero nine on third and final reading. May I ask the secretary to please read the entirety of the said ordinance?
Proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero nine, "An Ordinance Granting Milestone Incentives to All Bonafide Senior Citizens in the Province of Marinduke, Providing for the Mechanisms and Implementation thereof, Providing Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes", Authored by Honorable Antonio L. Mangkukang III and Honorable Mercedes Arihano, co-authored by Honorable Ismail Dipilim. Being enacted by the Sixteen Sangguyang Pandalawigan of Marinduke in session assembled, Section One, titled, "For brevity, this shall be known as the Senior Citizens Milestone Incentive Ordinance of the Province of Marinduke", Section Two, "Declaration of Policy", "It is hereby declared the policy of the Province of Marinduke to recognize and appreciate the vital contributions of the elderly nation building and their sacrificing role and contributions in making Marinduke a decent, livable and respectable province." Section Three, "Definition of Terms", "As used in this ordinance, the following terminology shall mean as follows: A bona fide senior citizen means a senior citizen who is a resident of the Province of Marinduke and is duly registered with the Senior Citizens Affairs Office or OSCA. Letter B refers to a package of goods and essential needs intended to support the subsistence of senior citizens. Letter C, milestone incentive, a monetary assistance given to a senior citizen who have reached their milestone years. Letter D, milestone years, refer to the year that senior citizen has had reached at the age of sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five, ninety and ninety-five. POSCA refers to the provincial office of the senior citizens affairs. PSWDO refers to the provincial social welfare and development office. And letter G, senior citizen or elderly means a person or individual who has reached the age of sixty and above. Section Four, provision of gift packs during milestone years. All bona fide senior citizens who have reached their milestone years of sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five, eighty and eighty-five shall be provided with gift packs during the occasion of their birthday. The content and cost of the said gift pack shall be determined by the PSWDO in coordination with the POSCA based on the needs of the respective senior citizens. Section Five, grant of financial assistance for the bona fide senior citizens who have reached their milestone years of ninety and ninety-five shall be given a milestone incentive in the form of cash which is intended to augment their daily survival and medical needs as follows: For ninety years old, five thousand; for ninety-five years old, ten thousand. Section Six, manner of granting, "The provincial government of Marinduke through the office of the governor in coordination with PSWDO, POSCA and the provincial treasurer's office shall award the milestone incentive in being granted during the milestone years of the respective senior citizens. The manner of distribution shall be determined by the PSWDO PGM, which shall be at the convenience of the senior citizen. Section Seven, Administrative Provisions, "The office of the governor in coordination with POSCA and PSWDO shall be primarily responsible in the implementation of this ordinance. The said offices shall likewise formulate and implementing rules and regulations, if necessary, in the effective and efficient implementation of this ordinance within sixty days upon its adoption. The said IRR shall be immediately submitted to the Sangguyang Pandalawigan for review and concurrence. Section Eight, Documentary Requirements, "The senior citizens or his or her immediate family shall submit to the OSC or PSWDO the following documents: Number one, senior citizen's identification card; and the number two, proof of residency, a certification from the punong barangay may be used for this purpose. Section Nine, appropriations, the necessary funds for the implementation of this ordinance shall be charged to the provincial funds for senior citizens. And the Section Ten, separability clause, "If for any reason, portion or section of this ordinance found unconstitutional or invalid, other sections or portions which are not affected shall continue to be full force and effect. Effectivity, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon approval."
Thank you, Honorable Sec. James. So, what's the pleasure of... Again, Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we vote the same on third and final reading through a roll call vote? A roll call vote is now declared.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Red?
Ah, Madam Chair, ah, hindi po ako nakapag-question kanina, pero eh, makapwede pong ihabol ko 'yung aking concern. Kasi nawawala po pala dito 'yung ano, 'yung sino po ang magdi-deliver nung ating gift pack dun sa ano.
Sir, there is a clarification being requested, although we are already in the approval for third reading, but this is a request for consideration from Honorable Red. The Chair declares one minute recess so we can discuss the concern of Honorable Red. Okay, the session resumed. So, what is now, can we proceed with the voting? Yes, a roll call vote is requested.
Honorable Mark Julius Picabalias?
In favor.
Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III? I vote yes. Antonio Mangkukang III? Honorable Bernardin Opis Mercado? Honorable Melgabala Ren Cabo? Honorable Mercedes Arihano? Honorable Danilo Arred? Honorable Ismail Dipilim? Honorable Jose Neril El Mangol? Honorable Valdo Mero Olympiada? Honorable Loren Rosales? Madam Presiding Officer, with eleven members voting in favor, no objection and no abstention.
With eleven members or all members of the board voting favorably to the proposed ordinance, the Chair declares...
Madam Chair? Before the Chair rules, I'd like to manifest that Honorable Jojo J. Devitt III and Honorable Dindin Opis Mercado be included as co-authors.
With the amendment, not an amendment, just an information that will be integrated. And maybe the Presiding Officer will advise also the secretariat that with regard to the final copy of the ordinance, let's put also the members of the sponsoring committees as sponsors. With the eleven members of the board present voting favorably to the proposed ordinance number sixteen dash zero nine, the Chair declares, "Proposed ordinance number sixteen zero nine entitled, 'An Ordinance Granting Milestone Incentives to All Bonafide Senior Citizens in the Province of Marinduke, Providing for the Mechanisms and Implementation thereof, Providing Necessary Funds Therefore and for Other Related Purposes', authored by Honorable Antonio Mangkukang, Honorable III, Honorable Mercedes Rehano, Honorable, authored by Honorable Ismail Dipilim, Honorable Mackie Cabalias, Honorable Aurelio Leva III, Honorable Danny Red, Honorable Dindin Opis Mercado, Honorable Loren Rosales, and final reading. Madam Chair, this is just a clarification. I understand that the sponsoring committee is the Committee on Appropriation and Social Services, so the Honorable Cabalias will be...
on appropriation and social services, so, uh, the Honorable Caballes should be included as the major sponsor, uh, sponsor. And, uh, ay, kasama naman na si, uh...
So all the chairs, sa lahat ng ordinances that will approve, we are requesting the secretary to manifest, to reflect in the final copy, the chairperson of the sponsoring committees as, uh, as, as sponsors, and all the members as co-sponsors.
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, inasmuch as proposed ordinance number sixteen dash nineteen was approved with amendment but was declared as urgent by the governor, I move that it be considered on third and final reading in today's session. And may I ask, and may the secretary be directed to read the entirety of the said measure.
Proceed, uh, Sec., uh, our good secretary.
Proposed ordinance number sixteen dash nineteen, "An Ordinance Providing for the Mechanism in the Acquisition of Land Necessary for the Marinduke Airport Development Project Located at Barangay Masiga and Liptangin in the Municipality of Gason, this province, and for other related purposes." Authored by Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III, chairperson of the Committee on Rules, Laws, and Ordinances. Section one, Coverage, this ordinance shall cover all the affected lots needed for the Marinduke Airport Development Project located at Barangay Masiga and Liptangin in the Municipality of Gason, this province. Section two, Authority to Negotiate, the provincial government is hereby authorized to negotiate and enter into a deed of donation, deed of absolute sale, or other similar agreement with the loan, agreements with the landowners for the acquisition of the affected lots needed for the Marinduke Airport Development Project. Section three, Expropriation, in case of failure in the negotiation or refusal to the offer of the provincial government of Marinduke, the provincial governor shall cause the initiation of expropriation proceedings pursuant to the memorandum of agreement signed by and between the provincial government of Marinduke and the Department of Transportation as authorized by Resolution Number Two eighty, series twenty twenty-two of the Sixteen Sangguyang Pandalawigan. Section four, fund, the necessary, the fund necessary for the implementation of this ordinance shall be taken from the funds of the Department of Transportation that was transferred to the provincial government of Marinduke, which is intended to cover the cost of the acquisition of the affected lots needed for the modernization and improvement of the Marinduke Airport, and the improvement found there too, including administrative costs, disturbance compensation if applicable, assistance to displaced people if applicable, transfer registration of land titles, procurement of the services of an independent property appraiser or IPA, or a government financial institution for the purpose of property appraisals, appraisal and related activities, and other related works. Section five, repealing clause, all rules, regulations, ordinances, orders, and/or securities that are contrary to or inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed, repealed or modified accordingly, including as per Resolution Number Two Three Three, series twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two for being unnecessary. Section six, Effectivity, this ordinance shall take effect in accordance with the provisions of Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one.
Madam Presiding Officer, may I ask that we approve the same through a roll call vote?
Roll call vote is now declared.
Honorable Mark Julius Picaballes.
In favor.
Honorable Aurelio J. Leva III. Honorable Antonio El Mangukang III. Honorable Bernadine Opis Mercado. Honorable Mel Gabal Arincabo. Honorable Mercedes Ariano. Honorable Danilo Arred. Honorable Ismael Dipilim. Honorable Jose Neril El Mangon. Honorable Valdo Mero El Impyada. Honorable Loren Rosales. Madam Presiding Officer, eleven members of the board voted in favor of the proposed, proposed ordinance, no objection and no abstention.
With eleven members of the board, or the total, uh, numbers of the board, all voting favorably to proposed ordinance number sixteen dash nineteen, the chair declares, "The ordinance providing for the mechanism in the acquisition of land necessary for the Marinduke Airport Development Project Located at Barangay Masiga and Liptangin in the Municipality of Gason, this province, and for other related purposes," authored by Honorable Aurelio Leva III, and sponsored by, uh, sino ang, sponsored by, uh, the concerned committee, kindly, uh, considered the, the members of the committee on rules as sponsoring. Is now declared, approved on third and final reading.
Madam Presiding Officer, for the outside business, we don't have any.
Okay, so any, is there any other concern? Kung balan na po, uh, the session is adjourned until ten o'clock next Friday.